Motion was made by Catherine White, seconded by Joe Edie Young. Glad to come out of executive session at 6:01 PM. Motion carried 5-0. No other action was taken. To have an approval to... A motion to approve the executive session minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes as presented.
Motion by Ms. Finley. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. White. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn the call board meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the call board meeting.
Motion by Ms. Conblett, seconded by...
Please, Catherine.
Ms. White, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. We are adjourned. Okay. The night... Time is now 6:04 PM. I'm going to call this regular board meeting to order. Mr. Smith, would you do the indications, please?
Absolutely. Goodbye, your guests. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together tonight, Father, and just give this board the wisdom and the knowledge to serve our children and serve the constituents of this county. And, Father, we just ask you to walk with us in our lives. And, Father, we just ask you to lay your hand on us and get us through this life in a manner that you would see fit. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. So, join me, please, believe. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item four. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Young. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you. Item five. Student recognition. I believe we have two groups of students to recognize from Jasper Middle School. JMS Principal, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening. Dr. Wilson, Mr. Young, Board of Education members. It is my honor to recognize some of our amazing Jasper Middle School students and some of their recent accomplishments. First, we had two group... Two fifth grade students move past the school round to compete in the Northwest Georgia Regional Social Studies Fair in Kennesaw. Micah Newton presented his project on the dangers of baby. And Ellison Steinhour presented her project on the Vietnam War draft. On behalf of the entire staff of JMS, I would like to recognize these students for their hard work and dedication. Micah Newton and Ellison Steinhour.
Congratulations.
Jasper Middle School also had four sixth grade students move past the school round to compete in the Regional Georgia Science and Engineering Fair, which features students competing from sixth to twelfth grade. These JMS students not only participated, but placed in their categories. Placing second in behavioral and social sciences was Grayson Ledington. Placing third in chemical engine energy was Eva Stanley. Placing third in plant science was Ellie Hollis. And placing fourth in earth and environmental science was Addison Lewis. The next group I would like to recognize is the Jasper Middle School Helen Ruffin Reading Quiz Bowl team. The JMS team of fifth and sixth grade students competed against other regional middle schools with sixth through twelfth grade students. In the regional competition, the JMS team placed third. I would like to reckon... Congratulate and recognize these dedicated and determined readers. From sixth grade, Emily Colley. Isabel Johns. Grayson Ledington. Eva Stanley. Addie Wood. Cody Cairo. And from the fifth grade, the same team, but our fifth grade students. Ashlyn Zipsey. Emily Cairo. Micah Newton. And Gracie Thompson. Also want to thank one of their coaches who's here helping me tonight, Ms. Kim Hamilton. She worked with... She worked with not only the Quiz Bowl team, but also our students in the Science and Social Studies Fair. And our other coach for the Quiz Bowl team was Ms. Katie Sobuleski, our academic coach, but she was unable to attend. So, thank you, guys, for giving us the...
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Coach.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Item six. Community recognition. PHS presents the Dragon Nation Enduring Flame Award. Mr. Wallace?
Good evening, Chairman Green, Board members. Dr. Wilson, Mr. Young. Hey, this is a really special time for us tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to get a few minutes to recognize a very important member of our community who's been super generous. So, just thank you for the time to be here. Dr. Keller, on behalf of Atlantic Coast Conservancy, approached us with the offer of making some substantial donations to various areas of our schools. He and his company believe that investing in young people here in Pickens County is very important and worthwhile. This has been extremely evident over the last several months. Dr. Keller brought forth some great ideas and ways to benefit our school and also allowed me, as the principal, to choose some items that would be nice additions as well. As long as it was something that could benefit our students, he was on board. I've gotten to know Dr. Keller pretty well over the last 10 years, and I can say with assurance that he is highly intelligent and he is passionate about conservation, education, and our community. The word generous does not sufficiently describe him. He has gone far beyond this term with his contributions to our district and our community. He cares deeply about making an impact that lasts far beyond our lifetimes, and we're very fortunate to have someone like this in our... On our side. I feel extremely blessed to be given the opportunity to get to know Dr. Keller and assist in steering some of the projects that have taken place on our campus, thanks to his selfless giving. I want to highlight some of the ways these donations have been used here over the last year. One very important way was with our band uniforms. The Pride of Pickens marching band was able to completely replace their uniforms with a donation that he made. This is a major undertaking for our program. It takes many years to say for. The donation made this much-needed upgrade a reality this past year. And I have Mr. Oo, our band director, here with a sample of the uniform that the top that was... That was chosen and designed for our Pride of Pickens. They wore them throughout their competitions and throughout the performances at football games this year. So, they really enjoyed that. They looked really sharp. Also, some of you may have noticed at the end of Dragon Drive at Highway 53, we got a new sign at the end of last school year, and it allows us to communicate with all of our stakeholders and especially our students about important things going on on our campus. And this was a really, really nice addition and makes it a lot easier to change and update than going down there and putting the letters in. So, we worked closely with Smoky Mountain Sign Company here in Jasper, and those guys were awesome to help us out, and they completely refurbished the sign and put LED panels on each side, new paint, new electronic LED signage all over the sign. And it was... We got it ready for graduation at the end of last year, so it was a nice addition, and it continues to be a nice addition for us. Cheerleading. A monetary donation was used to help pay fees for students who otherwise would not have been able to pay. The money also allowed for the program to purchase new uniforms, as you see in the pictures. Our soccer program, there were also monetary donations made to assist the team in purchasing new uniforms, new soccer balls, equipment, nets, and some other things for the season. Also, another way he helped our community and our school system was that he left... Paid some left unsettled lunch charges at the end of the year that can create a burden for our nutritional department. This donation was given to students or given to accounts at all schools and helped us clear out those balances at the end of the school year, so that was a big help. He also donated to the crisis fund here in our district to help students and families that are connected to our district and involved in our district in areas of need for crisis situations. Another item he helped with and helped us purchase was a Kubota RTV for our campus. We have 139 acres over there, and that piece of equipment's been very nice to have. It's also a safety issue as we're able to monitor around our campus, get down to our outdoor classroom in event student need to be transported from there. So, transported people back and forth from the stadium for accessibility. It's just been really nice. It's been a lot of... Lot of help to us, so that's been... Been super helpful for us to have on campus. Also, one of the latest things he's done is he's provided a scholarship endowment, and this has been named to honor our very own Mr. Phil Anderson III, our board attorney here. And these students who meet specific criteria will be able to get up to $5,000 a year if they decide to go to Reinhardt College, and it will help them all the way through a master's program. So, up to five years paying $5,000 per year. So, this is something, obviously, that's going to help many of our students coming through and give them something to work hard for, so we're very proud of that as well. At this time, I would like to make a special recognition of Dr. Keller, getting him to come up here, which is something he's probably not going to be real fond of, but I want to get him up here and present him with the first-ever Dragon Nation Enduring Flame Award and just show him a token of our appreciation for all he's done for our community and our schools. So, Dr. Keller, if you'll come on up, please, sir.
It's not that I mind coming up and doing these things. Amberly lies to me every time I come here. "We were coming for something else," and so she ratted me out again. Folks, thank you. I've never seen a group of people that are as dedicated to their community as you guys are, and especially this guy. I'm very honored to be his friend. He has helped us grow our business. I couldn't have done it without him. So, all of this stuff that we do, he's here, Amberly's here, Joe Walker's here, Gary Hammond's here, all of these people, and we all care about this community. So, thank you so very much. Appreciate it. I'm not kidding. You're not going to walk away for this one, are you?
Thank you. To conclude this presentation, I wanted to pause and thank some very special people that helped make this possible. First and foremost, Ms. Amberly Gottfried. Thank you. She helped guide this. She helped me keep this under wraps while still giving me some input. This thing's been about three months in the making, so it was... I'm not known for my artistic creativity, so it was really helpful. So, I appreciate all your help, Amberly. And then, we also had a lot of help from the people who helped create this. So, the fine folks at Blue Ridge Marvel, Sam Probst was instrumental in helping get this done. We appreciate Sam a whole lot, and I know he was excited to see it all put together. And then, the folks that did the glass portion of it is a company called Lilly Glass blowers down in Ostel, Georgia. And Camille and Tom Lilly were instrumental in making that happen, working with me. So, give a shout out to all those people, and it's an absolute honor for us to just give back a little token of all the things he's done for us and on our campus and throughout our district. So, thank you again, Dr. Keller, and thank you, Lord, for giving me a chance to honor him tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations again to our JMS students. We're very proud of you and all your accomplishments and JMS staff for all you do for our students. Congratulations and thank you again, Dr. Keller and Atlantic Coast Conservancy. We know y'all... It does not go unnoticed, all the contributions you make to our community and in particular our school system. I did want to pause for just a minute. Everyone is more than welcome to stay if you'd like to, but if you're here just for the recognition part, if you want to step out, you're more than welcome. Okay. Item seven. Superintendent reports. Dr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First one is our financial report, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Martha's got general fund pulled up for us. As of March 11th, we have collected 71.08% of our budgeted revenue. I'll draw your attention to the top line. We're just shy of about 92% of those ad monum taxes being collected. But we're actually in a pretty good position for this time of year. We do always want that to get to 100%, but we know it probably won't happen. But we will continue to monitor this throughout the rest of this school year. We have expended... Now, I'm going to have to get glasses. 55... I definitely can't see that, but 55.38%. I can read it when I do it out here. 55.38% of our budgeted expenditures. We're on track in all categories. When you see a higher percentage, for example, in instructional staff training in excess of 90%, those are training opportunities that we afford our staff, in particular teachers. Those things have been going on throughout the year. We are issuing the last... We're going to go ahead and issue the last quarter of purchase orders, so that should be that high at this point in time. We will have a few things we need to reimburse after they attend some of the events, but most of the registrations have been taken care of at this point, so we'll wait to do travel reimbursements after they attend and come back. Do y'all have any questions on general fund? And we did have our first budget workshop on March the 8th. Thought it went very well. The legislative session is... We are... How many days we have left? I believe we have eight or nine days left of the session. Kind of wanted to explain a little bit about TRS. TRS, a rate was set in May of 18. The concern out there... I've had a couple of people ask me about this. The concern out there is House Bill 109 is changing... It could potentially change a lot of things when it comes to new employees coming into the TRS system, those beginning July 1st of 19 or later. It was in the House. Quite a few changes were made. I've looked at the most recent version. There's no mention of the TRS rate for FY '20, but depending on what happens in it... I've even talked to Financial Review and DOE just to confirm what the rumors are out there. There's a concern that if they can't get the funding that they need at this time, they may need to approve that rate, even though it had already been set. It has not been published. They have approved it in a meeting back in May of last year, but some things have changed since then. Some things have come to light since then. So, we are still waiting that couple more weeks. You know, they do not convene their session every day, so hopefully by the end of March before spring break or maybe during, which is usually what happens, we'll get some results as to what is going to happen with that rate. The old rate only increased by four point... Excuse me. .49%. So, when you're hearing 6% to 9% increase, that's a big jump for me, so that's why there is concern out there. So, I know the leverage is not in House Bill 109. I went through this conversation the other day. But they still have the authority to change it, and they happen to have the trustee meeting convening. It's either March 27th or 28th, which is right at the end of the session, and can take action if they need to or choose to. Does that kind of help explain some of the TRS issues? Okay. Now, let's move on to capital projects and SPOLOST. Our SPOLOST revenue for the month of February was $433,261.41. Interest was earned of $3,257.71. And our expenditures for the month totaled $104,850.46. The month-end SPOLOST balance was $8,891,669.6. Of course, some of this money will go to our Pickens Junior High project, but we do have quite a bit of designated money to help take care of that project. So, we will not take... We will not dip into this fund very much. We'll stay intact for the other projects that we will have going, and you're going to hear some of those in Stacy's five-year facilities plan. And as always, a large report, we have no debt in Pickens County. Not a lease, not a loan, not a tan, not a bond. Y'all have any questions? Oh, sorry. Martha keeps me on track. And our 12-month average on our SPOLOST revenue is running about $423,584 and change. So, that is... It is continuing to go up. Now... Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next is our attendance report. Ms. Young.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. We'll start with the staff attendance report for the month. Last month's winner was Hill City, 96.12%. Numbers went down a little bit this month. We've got a pretty good bit of illness out there in some of the schools. Still, every school's sitting at 93.46% or higher, and this month's winner is Jasper Middle School Cory Thompson, 95.12%.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Moving on to the student attendance. Those numbers are down just a little bit as well, but still good. All of our schools are posting higher than 93% attendance. Last month's winner of the banner was the Junior High School, Dr. Flatt, at 95.32%. This month's winner, and he's going to have to work for it because Dr. Flatt didn't bring the banner, so... This month's winner is Cory Thompson, Jasper Middle School, at 95.27%.
Congratulations. You guys locked it this month.
Thank you. Awesome. Move on now to our detailed drop history. We gained some students back last month. This month, due to a lack of attendance, we had one student that was withdrawn that brings our grand total for the year to 11, so we're still in good shape on our drop. So, our student services are being commended for the hard work that they do to make sure we keep those numbers down. Move on to maintenance. Just move down to the next item. Actually, I'm going to do transportation first. I'm going to say maintenance for the end because I've got something that I want to read. So, I'm going to do transportation first. Transportation, of course, is always rock solid. Now, though, they're getting ready for the bus rodeo, which is coming up on April 13th, 2019. They're going to have two drivers that are finishing training from the last class, which is any drivers we can get for many of those classes is a huge help. And they're going to start another bus training class on April 22nd. Our mechanics, Nathan Hamby and Joel Collis, are going to be competing March 29th at RISA for the Technician District Competition with a chance to move on to the state competition as well. We always do well at the bus rodeo and at the Technician Competition. We've also got some first-of-tran training that's been going on, so transportation is doing a great job. Leads us into maintenance. The big thing with maintenance this week was a visit from Department of Education Facilities Review Team, which they reported to me on Tuesday of this week, and I wanted to share... And I will move through it quickly, but I wanted to share the survey team visit comments. State rep as well as representatives from several schools in our area came and inspected facilities and inspected transportation, and then they end the day with a presentation to superintendent, which was... I was there representing him that day, so they presented to me, and I want to read their comments to you and give the transportation, give the maintenance department a pat on the back. Even Stacy was surprised at how generous their comments were to us, but I want to share those with everybody. Facility survey team commends the superintendent and Board of Education for their ongoing efforts to maintain high-quality educational facilities by utilizing East SPOLOST and other funding resources. Survey team commends the Board of Education Superintendent and staff for developing an effective facility plan that will meet the instructional needs of students and projects for the present and future needs while preserving the rich history of each community. The survey team commends the superintendent and Board of Education on its installation of the security vestibules, welcome center, and cameras at all facilities, making safety a priority. The survey team commends the Board of Education Superintendent and Director of Operations on extensive planning processes and long-term facility vision. And lastly, the survey team extends our appreciation to Pickens County schools for their great hospitality and friendly reception. So, as one of the visitors said to me that time... That day, he said, "You guys are knocking it out of the park." Extremely complimentary. Stacy and his team worked extremely hard and do an awesome job for us, and when outside groups come in and leave comments like that with us, then we know we're doing the right thing in those departments. So, I want to thank Stacy for his efforts there. Food services. Speaking of another operation that's rocking it, I'm going to let Beth. She has... She has some news that she wants to share, so I'm going to let you do it because this will be absolutely amazing when she tells you what's been going on in food services. So, Beth, go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Young, Chairman Green, Board members, Dr. Wilson, glad to see you. So, I wanted to just remind you, last month, we talked about the National School Breakfast Week and the challenge, and that challenge took place last week. So, I'm going to just go ahead and share the results because it just really was very impressive. The breakfast challenge that was sponsored by the Atlanta Community Food Bank, it provided really the perfect atmosphere for our schools to hold some friendly competition amongst each other, and there really was a lot of competition out there. It was a great week filled with excitement, music, movies, prizes, popular breakfast foods, and the students appreciated both being able to eat in the cafeteria and also in the hallway on the way to the classroom. So, we really did a second chance breakfast. We did breakfast in the halls. We did everything that you can possibly think of. Our school nutrition staff, they really kicked it up a notch throughout the entire week. We shattered all sorts of records with the number of students that we served. My staff, really, they are to be commended for their willingness to take on the additional work. I mean, I threw so much at them, it's kind of like Dr. Wilson does to all of us, but I did my best. Learned by what I've been taught, and I do the same thing with them, and they never cease to amaze me that they come through with the challenge that I give them because they're very competitive as well. But they did the additional work they needed to, and they use their creativity to engage the students. So, but also, thanks was out to all the administrators that helped us, and we have some rock stars in here that actually participated. Marlo is on the serving line at Harmony. I don't have pictures.
Oh, thank God.
I didn't get them in time, but she's... She looked like she was having a good time. Who knew? Food service could be so much fun, right? So...
We had a great time.
Yeah. It was fun. And the kids liked it, too. It's a celebrity on the line, so... But anyway, the administrators, the faculty, your school staff, ABM staff, everybody chipped in and helped us as we expanded our breakfast program because it truly did take an army, and it's just so wonderful. Again, another good example of our district and how we all work together as a team for the common good, and I just... I love that about this place. So, the highlights. Monday, we served a new record number of students breakfast for one day with 1,372. That doesn't sound like a lot, but for us, that's good. Then Tuesday, we broke that record, and then we broke it again on Wednesday, and then on Thursday, and then finally Friday was our biggest day. We fed 1,706 students. And on that particular day, I think attendance across the board is about 95.1%. So, that was over 42, 43% of our students ate breakfast that day. Going into the week, we were lucky to do 22 to 23% of our students. So, that was huge. And in fact, the 1,706 that we did last Friday, the week before that on Friday, we only fed 1,092, so that's 700 more students. Throughout the week, we averaged 500 more student meals per day. Again, the district of 4,300 students, that's significant, so... The top performers, there were two schools that really outperformed all others this week in terms of the increase in their participation. That was Tate Elementary and Pickens Junior High School. Tate had the highest average daily participation percentage for the week, with 61% of their students eating breakfast. Prior to that, going into the week, they were at about 33% of the students eating breakfast, so jumped it all the way up to 61%. So, it was almost like lunchtime. Pickens Junior High had the largest increase in breakfast served per day. They served an additional 165 more students every day than the week prior. This really represented 176... So they averaged about 260 a day compared to the 92. And I told everybody going into it, all my managers, that my money was on the junior high because they had the worst participation going into it, so they had the pressure to grow.
Hey, hey, don't need to share that part.
I'm a very honest, if nothing else. But I'm also smart when I place my bets and so it turned out. And let's see, what else can I tell you? So because of all that, the winner of the breakfast challenge for achieving the highest increase in the number of student breakfasts, congratulations, will go to Pickens Junior High School. They will be receiving $1,000 from the Atlanta Community Food Bank. We will in turn go back, put it into the school. Part will go into the program to buy us some technology help because we want to keep what we started. We want to sustain. This week, Dr. Flatt shared with me that, you know, the kids were already like, where's the breakfast cart? We want breakfast.
We almost had a riot on Monday.
They almost had a riot on Monday when they were told there wasn't a breakfast. And also, he shared with me that the nurse in the clinic said it was an amazing week because of the number of kids. But at nine o'clock or so, the number of kids that she saw in the clinic was drastically reduced from the week prior because they had eaten. Because she normally sees, you know, 100 students or so a day coming in, they're dizzy and they got a headache and they got a stomach ache, and she gives them something to eat. So anyway, for all those reasons, this was a great opportunity for us to really expand our program and show what we can do. And this is really what I want to go forth with next year. I just got to get some people in place and some equipment and some more technology and then we can, we can do it. So anyway, I'm just proud of everybody for what they accomplished and I just want to thank you all for allowing me to share my enthusiasm, as Stacy said, and I get too excited about it, so that's why I wanted to share. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Beth. That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I would like to say that we just completed our advanced ed visit. We'll get a full report in about 30 days. They did talk to us as they exited. I know Jill and Tony were there with them and I was on the phone with them. They did not want me to come by the office that day at all. But they were extremely complimentary in a number of things. One of them was the culture and climate that's been created. A lot of it was also some of the changes as far as staffing positions being in the right place. But they will share that with us. But they were also overwhelmed by the hospitality that Pickens County showed them. And I'm very thankful for our community and also for Whitbridge and everybody that had any part of that. They made them feel very, very welcome and they were very impressed with our school system. But we'll get there in 30 days. But I do want to thank Jill and all for her hard work and everyone that helped her because it was a great big effort from a lot of people and they also knocked it out of the park on that one. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Congratulations Stacy and your staff. And congratulations Beth and all your staff. And congratulations, Dr. Flatt. And congratulate, thank you all for all your hard work on advanced ed. I know that was a lot this week. Item eight, action items. First, we have approval of four personnel action reports. The first personnel action report, do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
I make a motion to approve the first personnel action report as presented.
Motion by Mrs. White, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Finley. Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Five and none opposed, thank you. Second personnel action report, do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
I make a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Youngblood, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Four, any opposed? Any abstained? One abstained. Third personnel action report, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Mrs. White, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Four, any opposed? Any abstained? One abstained, Ms. Youngblood. Fourth personnel action report, do I have a motion to hear it approved as presented?
I make a motion we approve that personnel action report as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Finley, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. White, any further discussion? All in favor? Four, any opposed? Any abstained? One abstained, Ms. Youngblood. Fourth personnel action report, do I have a motion to hear it approved as presented?
I make a motion we approve that personnel action report as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Finley, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. White, any further discussion? All in favor? Four, any opposed? Any abstained? One abstained, Ms. Youngblood. Fourth personnel action report, do I have a motion to hear it approved as presented?
I make a motion we approve that personnel action report as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Finley, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. White, any further discussion? All in favor? Four, any opposed? Any abstained? One abstained, Ms. Youngblood. All four personnel action reports are approved as presented. Item B, approval to purchase buses. Stacy, do you want to talk about that a little bit? Or I can, I have.
You got it, Russ.
I got it, yes.
It's a normal thing we do every year and through the board's support, we've been able to purchase six a year. We may end up getting some money from the state, but they haven't allocated that yet for us. We may get one bus this year, a partial funding for it. If we do, we'll come back to you about that. But this will put us in line. We have every bus on our routes air-conditioned. Every route bus will be air-conditioned. Some of the sub-buses won't be, but this is a great feat and I commend you all for doing that. It's really important for our kids, I think. We're getting close. I told Dr. Wilson and Tony the other day that we're getting closer, probably in six more years, our bus fleet will be 10 years old. That is wonderful. We don't find that in the state of Georgia. Y'all have done a great job staying on top of this even way before I got here. Appreciate your support from the time I got here on, but if we can get a 10-year-old fleet, you have the safest, most up-to-date buses you can have, and that's what we've got to do for our kids.
Thank you. Stacy and I noted this, there will all be air-conditioned, five 72 passenger buses and 148 passenger bus with a wheelchair lift at just over 600,000 out of SPOLOST. You may have any questions for Stacy on that? I'm going to make a motion to approve these six buses. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion?
All in favor?
Five, none opposed, thank you. Item C, I'm going to need you again, Stacy, please. Approval of resolution for five-year local facilities plan.
You heard some about it a minute ago about to review, but I'll explain to you just a little bit what a five-year facility plan is. It's not all our building projects. It's not, it does help us fund them, but a five-year facility plan is based on your inventory. And what they mean by inventory is classroom space and how many students we have. And it is the formula of the state, which you know, state formulas always help the state. They help us a little, but not like we want them to. But anyway, this is how we earn entitlement money. And you'll see in our next, in our GMP that's coming up, that we earn entitlement money for part of the renovation work at Pickens Junior High because of the age of the building, the age of the roof, the age of the air conditioning units. And it's all on a formula and like the air conditioning units every 10 years, roofs 20 years. The building's got to get so old before you earn the money. We're earning money now. High school's earning a lot of money now. So you'll see, we'll get some entitlement money to help with that in the GMP later. But the five-year facility plan does list the projects we've all been talking about. Dr. Wilson brought to you earlier. They are listed, but this is updated every year. We can change it every year. It's all online now. It used to be, it used to be a book about that thick. Now it's like this and everything's online. They have, we had to have all new drawings done this year and put square footage and room numbers in them. We had to walk every building, make sure the classroom is being used for what it's supposed to be used for. And so it's just an accounting of what we have and they come and check. And it's important for us to earn our money and we're earning as much as we possibly can. They couldn't find a reason for us to change anything.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution for a five-year local facility plan as presented?
I make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Youngblood, second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. White, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Item D, approval of guaranteed maximum pricing for Phase One construction at Pickens Junior High School. Can I call you back up here, please?
All right. You remember, I guess in December, we brought the old board, it wasn't a guaranteed price, it was a maximum price not to exceed for the Phase One renovation project at Pickens Junior High. It was like $4,454,000. We actually have gone out to bid. We've received the bids. Very pleased with the way they came in. Had a lot of bidders. Tony and Dr. Wilson went with us over there to see this. It was a great, it was great to see. We came in with a guaranteed maximum price of $3,999,458 for Phase One. That's $454,000 less than what they had told us before. And we will be getting $802,138 of the entitlement I was talking about from the state. So that SPOLOST and local funds will be spending $3,197,000 on this project. So we actually will be able to do some other things because of a good bid process and a lot of participation.
This is not any of the new phase construction. This is all basically, it is some, but not all of it, or the new.
Phase One consists of a total remodel inside the building, floor ceiling lights, urinals, bathroom toilets, sinks, all that stuff. And the front parking lot to fix for bus parking down the front, putting a canopy, walkway, and the pad, getting the pad ready for the new phase addition. That's what would be in Phase Two, the pad for the art showroom in the building and all that. And then a parking, new parking area where that pad will be taking over the existing parking area. So there's some of it in there, but most of it, this is just a remodel.
And do you have the timeline for Phase One?
Phase One will be done by time school starts.
Is it going to start this school year or will it be off summer?
It's going to start spring break, probably.
Okay.
What we can do, if this is approved tonight, it starts soon. That's why we went out and bidded at this time because a lot of stuff only bids, will probably bid two months from now, so you lose bidders. You don't, because people are covered up in the summer and they don't want a tight line, timeframe like this. It went out, it's a good time, we got a lot of participation.
Any other questions for Stacy? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your hard work.
I think that's the last time I'm going to call you up here.
Well, we're in charge.
Do I hear a motion to approve guaranteed maximum pricing for Phase One construction at Pickens Junior High School?
Not so much.
Motion by Mr. Smith, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Finley, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Dr. Flatt, you're about to get a face lift.
I need one too.
Item E, approval of voting delegate and alternate at 2019 GSB Summer Conference in Savannah, Georgia for the delegate assembly. I need a motion to nominate an individual, this board should be the voting delegate.
I make a motion to nominate Tucker Marine as the voting delegate.
Any other nominations? Is there a second to that nomination? Second. Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Can I hear a motion to nominate an alternate for the delegate assembly?
I nominate Steve Smith to be the alternate delegate at the convention.
Any other nominations? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor for Mr. Smith to be the alternate? Five, none opposed, thank you. Item F, approval of minutes. This is to approve the minutes for the February 14th call board meeting and February 14th regular board meeting. I believe everybody's had time to review those minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Mrs. White, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Item G, approval of surplus. I believe this is both. Both surpluses are from Tate. I believe it's some broken chrome books and things of that nature. Any questions on the surplus items? Do I hear a motion to approve the surplus as presented?
I make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Youngblood, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Finley, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Item N, board comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment.
Ms. Youngblood.
I'd like to take a moment to clarify some comments that were in the paper this week that were attributed to me regarding classified pay for our staff. There seems to be some misunderstanding among staff in the county, especially classified staff, about benefits. It was stated in the article that we generally pay $13,000 for a parapro and that with the additional funds and benefits, that goes up to $27,000. I've had many express to me a concern that we're only benefits having to be paid for classified staff. And I would like to clarify, as I know Dr. Wilson would, that benefits are paid for every staff member that's employed in Pickens County and that certainly for higher salaried employees, those benefits are higher. I stand by my statement that classified employees, which includes all groups of staff members excluding certified teachers, are the mainstay of this organization. And I personally apologize to any staff members that felt that the tone of this article implied that they were not valued by this school system. I feel like that that was not the intent of this board, nor was it the intent of Dr. Wilson. And I can publicly assure you that Dr. Wilson is committed to all staff members in this county. I and the board remain passionate to increase the salaries of this valuable group so that they can have a livable wage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Youngblood. Any other comments? None being. Section D, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Section 10, I'm sorry.